I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, November 18, 2021, regular meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. And we'll get started with a roll call. Commissioner Tosterson.
Here.
Mr. Fendig.
I'm here, sir, with my RSM cap on and my Georgia Bulldog coffee cup.
Commissioner Bronson.
Here.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Rafalski.
Here.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
Here.
And Commissioner Neal is here. Other staff that we have with us this evening. If you'd identify, please. Okay, I see Tamara. I see Rhonda.
Pamela Thompson.
See Miss Thompson.
Aura Reed.
Ms. Reed.
Monica Harden.
Monica. Aaron is here. Others on staff that we might have with us tonight. Okay, would that like to ask Commissioner Booker if he would lead us in our invocation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you once again with bowed heads and humble heart, thanking you for this day. Thanking you for waking us up with breath in our bodies, in our right minds, Heavenly Father. And Heavenly Father, we come to you in this time of Thanksgiving, thanking you for all the blessings you bestowed upon our families, our citizens, this community, Heavenly Father. We ask that you continue to rein peace and love down on this community as we move forward through all of our challenges, Heavenly Father. Be there the pandemic, be there this trial and these tensions around race in this community, Heavenly Father. But you know our hearts, Heavenly Father. You put a measure of faith in each one of us. And if we stand on that, Heavenly Father, come what may, that we've committed to stand together, Heavenly Father, to praise your name no matter what. That we would change things, Heavenly Father, for your glory and not ours. We ask that you continue to watch over the families of the law enforcement officers that keep us safe, Heavenly Father, locally. And the military, men and women that stay in a post for us near and far. We ask that you be with their families and comfort them when they put themselves in harm's way for us, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask now that you are here in this meeting tonight, that is all of you and none of us, with all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. I need to entertain a motion to amend our agenda to add item 8.1 to the consent agenda and to pull item 7 from the consent agenda and move it to general business.
I also need a couple items pulled, Mr. Chairman. And that's two and items five on the consent, general business.
All right, sir. And in pulling those, do you want to move them to general business or do you want to just pull them for discussion in consent agenda?
They can be pulled just for consent agenda discussion.
Okay. All right. So if it's okay with you, we'll have a motion in just a second to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions, and then we'll pull those at that time. Would that be all right with you?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. So I need a motion to amend our regular agenda for this evening to add 8.1 and to pull item 7 and move that to general business.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to add 8.1 to the agenda. Is that correct?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. And then to move item 7 and to to general business? Is that what he was wanting?
No, I think we just needed to move it to seven to general business and two and five just be pulled for discussion.
Okay. So that motion includes number two and number five from consent agenda?
We're going to leave them on consent agenda, but pull them for discussion. Item number seven, if this is too convoluted, we'll just add 8.1 to the consent agenda and we'll pull them all and talk about them now. But I was going to move item seven because it's going to take probably a little bit of discussion.
All right, sir. Anyway, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And I was having trouble hearing you, Commissioner Fendig. Are you moving just item seven to general business or are you going to leave item seven in consent?
I understood that we wanted to move seven from consent.
Yes, sir.
General business, correct?
Yes. So as I have it, then I'm going to repeat the motion to add item 8.1 to the consent agenda and pull item seven from the consent agenda and move it to general business. And I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner O'Quinn. That's how everybody has understood it by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn.
Chairman Neal? The second was by, I believe, Commissioner Rafalski, just for to clarify.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But also, Mr. Chairman, is the pull items two and five off of consent for discussion?
And I was going to do that when we did consent agenda.
Okay, I got you.
If that's okay with everyone.
Yeah.
All right. So now we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rafalski, and by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rafalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bronson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tosterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, yes. All right, that will amend the agenda. Our next section is public comment. And our first speaker tonight is Mr. Phil Allen. Mr. Allen, if you would come forward and state your name for the record, please, sir.
Okay, I'm here. If you remember, I was here in May, at the May meeting of the County Commission, I gave a presentation addressing traffic on St. Simons. No steps have been taken to alleviate the problem, so I'm here again. And I'm Phil Allen, a 47-year resident of St. Simons. A brief history of myself is I graduated from Georgia Tech, obtaining a degree in civil engineering. Transportation engineering is a part of civil engineering, so I have some credentials concerning traffic. After leaving Tech, I worked for Georgia Power and lived Atlanta at the time, Atlanta traffic and all. I designed and constructed the main 115 KV line that furnishes power to St. Simons and Sea Island in 1971, 50 years ago. Some of y'all weren't even born in. This is a steel line and is supported by steel upside-down rocket ship foundations. The most challenging aspect of the project was the crossing of McKay River. Formerly, the line was supported by three woodpile structures, and I designed two large structures and increased the line tension so we could span all the way across the McKay River. It has a massive foundation under each pole. It has a six-foot diameter concrete casing 60 feet deep, which has held up for 50 years. St. Simons and Sea Island have not lost power even during hurricanes. I liked St. Simons so much that I moved here permanently in 1974. In '77, I became a registered professional engineer. In 1985, I started Allen and Graham, Inc., and am currently as president. We are a general contracting business that works in industrial construction work in Florida, Georgia, and South Carolina. I have seen St. Simons grow from a few thousand people to what it is today, 16,000 permanent residents and 25,000 to 30,000 temporary residents. A lot has transpired during the last 47 years. The island has grown tremendously and is now a crowded mess. As others have moved here to enjoy the good life, the traffic has become almost unbearable on Frederica Road. I currently live on Stevens Road. I love the island and want to protect it for future generations to enjoy. A current traffic study has been done, completed on November 9th. The study has shown that Frederica, north of Sea Island Road, has 17,200 cars on a daily basis. It should be noted that this was not in the peak time of year, so it's usually more than that. A counter was placed on Frederica Road just north of Sea Island Road. The state of Georgia DOT says a road should be four-lane, somewhere around 15,000 cars per day. We are exceeding that now, and the potential growth of St. Simons, north of Sea Island Road, is very likely that Frederica will have to be four-laned soon. This will require cutting down a lot of our tremendous oak trees, which will definitely lower the ambiance of St. Simons Island. In the last six months, traffic has increased by, and this is since I was here last time, traffic has increased by 1,800 cars per day or 3,600 cars per day on an annual basis. In five years, it will be 32,000 cars per day if we can't continue as we are now, 32,000 cars per day. And that would definitely require a four-lane. We need a four-lane now. In 2015, there was a short moratorium on building on the island and has been forgotten. I believe this moratorium should be reinstated while the situation is looked at in more detail. At this point, only a small number will be given a permit only after being approved by the Planning Commission and the County Commissioners after a thorough review has been done. Now I see three alternatives. Number one, keep going as we are now and eventually four-laning Frederica Road, cutting down trees and removing buildings in the way. This will cost a tremendous amount of money as well as losing the ambiance of St. Simons. This is the worst alternative. Number two, add a second causeway, probably at the north end of the island. This would cost near $1 billion and have a tremendous number of environmental problems as a continuous bridge would have to be built and avoid placing fill at various locations as was done in the existing causeway. Anymore, we'd have to have a continuous bridge to Brunswick. And number three, place a moratorium on issuing new building permits while the problem is studied and other solutions are presented. If desired, I will circulate a petition to people from the north end of St. Simons who agree with me. The island residents expect something to be done. Eliminating new construction will meet a lot of resistance. Making tough decisions is a job for true leaders, as y'all are. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We appreciate you coming in tonight. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Jeff Kilgore. If you would come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I am Jeff Kilgore. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and present again. I was here two weeks ago to discuss what I have proposed for this Board of Commissioners to create a Citizens Ethics Review Board. One of the things that I think you need to be reminded of is your oath when you were sworn in. You swore to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Georgia. You also swore to support and enforce the laws of Glen County and of the State of Georgia. There are ethics sections in the official code of the State of Georgia. Title 45, Section 10-1 deals with the ethics for employees and other officials of county government. Paragraph two specifically says that the employees, just as you are obligated to do, must uphold the Constitution and all of the laws. Paragraph nine compels the employees to expose corruption wherever it's discovered. Now, Title 45, Section 10-3 deals with elected officials and members of the board, as you are. It requires you uphold the Constitution just as your oath did. It also requires that you enforce and maintain the laws. And it also requires that you expose corruption wherever it's discovered. Now, when I talk about an ethics review board, the objective would be that you handle these problems locally and that you implement some enforcement provision. You have a local ethics section, 2-2-41 through 2-2-45. And there is also a section in the official code of the State of Georgia for those folks in counties who do not have an enforcement provision. And it provides that an ethics complaint can be filed with the governor of the State of Georgia. And Title 45, Section 10-4 provides that if an ethics complaint is filed, then the governor must convene. The code says he shall convene a hearing to hear evidence on the basis of those charges. So the way I see it, if we can deal with these situations locally, that'd be preferable. But if we can't, then going to Atlanta and appearing before the governor is the next alternative. There is a section in your local ordinance, 2-1-10, for violations. It provides for a $500 fine for violations by employees or by elected officials. Now, you know we have problems in this county obeying the law. For example, tonight, on your agenda, this item number seven that you've discussed is beyond your authority. We have a county manager form of government. You are not county managers. You do not hire anybody except for the county manager. The county manager hires all of the other county employees. And so this item seven, as the chairman suggested, should go to a work session, in my opinion. You also have significant problems with your county attorney, who allows your local ordinances and the state laws to be violated on a regular basis. Most notably, with the German Village situation from 2019, when you, the Board of Commissioners, was compelled to convene a quasi-judicial proceeding, which they did not. Several of you are new. You weren't here then. But those violations resulted in property owners and taxpayers of this county being penalized. I ask you again to implement on your own initiative a Citizens Ethics Review Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Hearing a carousel in the background there somewhere. We need to clarify on the item that we added to the consent agenda, item 8.1. I failed to name what that was. 8.1 is to consider amending the Glen County Local Design Manual as outlined with the changes to become effective upon approval. And that is the description of item 8.1 as we move forward. We'll move now to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent agenda, except for any item the new commissioner wishes to pull.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item two and five for discussion. And I second the motion.
Second the motion and
We had one other gentleman that wanted to make a comment about the thing I was talking about.
Sir, he wasn't on the list of speakers for this evening. I'm sorry. So we have a motion, I believe, by Commissioner O'Quinn and a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda with the request to move item two and number five for discussion. That's how I understand it. All in favor? Commissioner O'Quinn? That's how I understand it. All in favor of Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal? Yes. So the consent agenda is approved with exception of items two and, and five. And Commissioner Booker, the floor is yours.
Yeah, item two, the agreement with Joint Water and Sewer. And, and Mr. Chairman, you may be able to answer this, but I, I wanted to know exactly what they plan to use the funding for. It seems to be pretty general. And one of my concerns is that I've been trying to get system ran over to the Arco area neighborhood and to deal with how we would be able to get past the cost of the tap fees. And at one point, they told me they had worked it out to the point that if we applied for, I think, a CDBG grant for the tap fees, you know, we would be able to get that done. So I just wanted to see if that was still the case. But, but also to find out exactly if this, some of this funding is going to be used for that or, or what.
Commissioner Booker, I can speak a little bit to that and then Mr. Mumford maybe can fill in for us. We did consider this at the JWSC Commission meeting this afternoon with the Intergovernmental Agency Agreement for the four million dollars. There is a stipulation in there that Phase Two of the St. Simons Island Drainage would come out of this. This four million dollars is, is a two-million-dollar payment on, on the first half of the funds and a two-million-dollar payment on the second half of the funds. There was talk today, not in connection with this four-million-dollar agreement, but there was talk about special tap fees for the Arco community and that the grant had been applied for as a.
Thank you. Have an echo, Mr. Chairman.
Really? I only have one device on, so. But anyway, the, the Arco funds, they, they have applied for a grant. He has not heard back from that grant yet. But the discussion was that there were going to be special provisions made for the Arco community with, with taps at the time that they would tie on. So no, no vote was taken on that today, but the general consensus was that that, that was a good idea and a good plan moving forward.
Okay. Sounds good.
Mr. Mumford, do, do you have anything to add to that? I am not trying to, to convey the essence of the agreement, but.
Certainly. So Commissioners, excuse me. The only thing, well, the agreement requires the JWSC to use the funds for water and sewer capital infrastructure projects. That's the requirement across the base. The only specific project in the agreement that's required of Joint Water and Sewer is the Village Water and Sewer Project. Beyond that, anything in Arco is not required by the agreement, although they can use it for that. It's not required as, as currently written.
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification here. Wasn't another portion of this, that they have to be already designed and shovel-ready? Do I remember that being a part of the package or no?
It is not part of the, the agreement. So, you know, it could be, I mean, it's, it's an open blank slate for water and sewer. Other than the Village Drainage Project, they can use these funds for any, any capital infrastructure projects they, they choose. They may have already earmarked it. I'm not sure if they have or not. But from the agreement standpoint by itself, it's, it's, it's free for them to use for those kinds of projects. So I, I'm not, I'm not aware of everything that requires them, Commissioner Fendig, to already have it shovel-ready under the, you know, under ARPA.
I will say that they do have to have the projects completed by December of twenty twenty-six and fully encumbered by December of twenty twenty-four. So, you know, I'm not sure how, how the ARPA funds could be used for the tap fees unless everyone was tapped in prior to the deadline where all the funds have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Well, it sounds like they, they have applied for a grant for the tap. Is that right, Mr. Chairman? Is that your understanding?
They, they have, they have applied for a grant for the taps for, in ease. But they're, they're also, in the event that the grant doesn't come through, there's alternative plans in place to give special rates. If the grant comes through, I believe it's a participating grant where the grant would pay ninety percent. The, the homeowner would pay ten. And I may be getting fuzzy on those facts, but I understand that's how the grant would be applied. But there's other programs that we asked, the, the chairman of Joint Water and Sewer asked tonight, this afternoon, for Mr. Burrows to work a program for consideration. And there was agreement in the room for that.
Do you know if there's been a, a study about the, the number of failing systems, septic systems in the Arco community, Mr. Chairman?
I do not have that information at my fingertips. There, there has been some study done and it seems that we got a report a few months ago, but I don't remember the specifics of that.
Okay. If you could get that and share it with us, that would be helpful.
All right.
I mean, at least me. I don't know if anyone else, but I, I know I would like it.
I'm making a note. Are you ready to vote on item number two?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll submit a motion to approve item two as presented.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir.
All right. And by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal? Yes. So that is unanimous. And then item number five, Commissioner Booker?
Yeah, I, and I don't know, Aura might can help with this. This is with the first responders, sort of special pay, bonus pay. I had gotten a lot of calls from some of our Public Works employees. Are they going to be a part of this for this?
No, sir. This is Aura. They are, they are not included in that. This is mainly for the, the, the govern, the Governor's Office is very specific about who gets that. And it's mainly law enforcement, first responder, meaning fire, sheriff, nine-one-one, and, you know, police. And, and, but no Public Works employees were included on that list. And Monica is here and so is Tamara. They may want to elaborate on that, but tho, those employees were not included on the list provided by the Governor's Office.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, they, they seem to be adamant that there was, that they're, can be considered first responders. And I just want to make sure that they, they are clear about this.
That we have tried to be clear with them about that. The information that the, the state is requiring is a certification, a public safety certification. You have each individual law enforcement or detention officer, nine-one-one operator, whatever. They have a state certification number. And that's what they're requiring in Public Works employees or, you know, outside of that public safety realm, do not have that certification number. That's one of the requirements. So, yeah, they're, unfortunately, they're not included on that, in that grant.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
During any other discussion on item number five? Entertain a motion then?
I, I offer a motion that we approve item number five as presented.
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Quinn. By roll call then, Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
And Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal? Yes. So that is unanimous. That concludes our consent agenda items. Public hearings on abandonment. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. The public may also offer comments on the public hearing in one of two ways. Email written comments to the commissioners at glencounty-ga.gov. And these comments are directly presented to the board and will become public record. Members of the public may come to the Glen County Library located at two oh eight Gloucester Street, Conference Room B on today's date. And the county will have a Microsoft Teams connection in the conference room. Item number nine is AB four-eight-one-five. Consider the abandonment of a portion of the unopened Dixie Drive right-of-way in the East Beach subdivision. The western twenty-five feet of the area is sewn on the attached abandonment application. And Ms. Thompson, I see you. Are you presenting that tonight or is Mr. Andrews here?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm presenting it this evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Can you see the first slide of the PowerPoint?
I do.
Okay. Please let me know that you see that slide advancing just to make sure you can, you can see it. Again, this is a request for abandonment. This is a map showing the area. This is the proposed location. This is the abandonment plat. This is some of that area where we don't actually, if you looked to the right of this plat, there is potentially a lot that someone owes and pays taxes on, but this is our portion of Dixon Drive. Here is where we posted the abandonment notice. This is a typical view. It's very overgrown, so it was hard to get in and get a photograph. This is an aerial. This is the picture requested for abandonment. County Engineer Paul Andrews did send this out for comments. No utilities had any issues. We did receive some comments in from the public. Most were just informational in nature, wanting to know the details. One owner did have concerns regarding drainage once the lot is improved. The owner requested that the development doesn't impact their own existing house or pool. And we have looked at that. And any alterations to that area the board chooses to abandon will be looked at for drainage issues to make sure there are no neighborhood impacts. This is a proposed motion if the board wishes to abandon this portion of the unopened right-of-way for Dixon Drive in the East Beach subdivision. This twenty-five foot is larger than you normally see, but that's because that road portion is twenty-five foot. So that is half of the Dixon Drive right-of-way. The, this is a public hearing. I'm available if you have questions. And I believe the applicants are available online if you have any questions.
Pam, did you say it was the right-of-way is fifty feet? And he's asking for half or it's twenty-five feet and he's asking for all of it?
It's twenty-five feet and they're asking for half.
So they're asking for twelve and a half feet?
No, sir. Oh, I apologize. It's fifty feet and they're asking for half. If you see on this plat, hopefully you can see that on your screen above it, this is a fifty-foot public right-of-way, so they're asking for the half adjacent to their property.
What makes this different is we've been dealing with alleyways. This is a roadway. That's why that fifty-foot, that's the standard kind of roads for all in those old neighborhoods. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So is that road continuous from north to south? Is there any other areas that are abandoned along that road? Is this the first part that's being asked to be abandoned?
Sir, I can't tell you, I, I can't tell you exactly. I do know, I can't tell you on Dixon Drive. I can tell you we have done this in the past just because of the ocean and accretion and water that a lot of these are what we call paper roads. They were on the original plats and we've never actually, of course, constructed anything or maintained anything.
I walked out there today and I just would like to say I, I had a hard time identifying exactly what was being abandoned and what wasn't. So I, I find it, I found it very cumbersome to try to figure out exactly the area.
Yes, sir. I apologize. It is overgrown. If you'd like to hold the public hearing, you don't even have to hold that tonight. But if you'd like to defer it, we can go out there and actually stake and flag that area so that you can see better what the twenty-five feet, where that twenty-five feet is located.
Mr. Fendig, have any opinions on that?
Well, I mean, I mean, I agree. You said the same thing when we talked earlier. It's kind of hard to visualize the area. My, my concern is that, okay, this borders that, or is a part, I, I guess it borders the lawsuit area. I know in the past, when I served before, we had people come along that frontage there that wanted to abandon. I, I don't remember the exact legal reasons, but we didn't approve those requests. So does this land lay in that federal lawsuit jurisdiction area? Did you know?
Commissioner Fendig, I would need to defer to Aaron Mumford and I think Will Worley is much more familiar with that case. The answer is yes, but the concern was beyond this road right-of-way closer to the ocean. Are the lots that were in question in that lawsuit that we do still have some people paying taxes on? But the, I can let Aaron tell you that I think the legal opinion is the county still has right of access. Again, if y'all'd like any additional information, I'm happy before or after the public hearing to defer this and go out there and actually stake and flag this twenty-five feet so that you can see what we're talking about. Because what we're talking about is not part of the public access to the beach. It is behind an actual, of course, lot of the applicants. And we still have the way that citizens or visitors can get to the beach.
So you're saying on the eastern side of the road right-of-way, there are lots that people are still paying taxes on, but you don't have them, you don't have them designated on the GIS maps? Is that correct? I mean, because I don't see one right there.
There may not be one right here, Commissioner O'Quinn. There are just, I think we looked all up and down the coastline and there's a total of either eighty-one or ninety-one up and down the coastline. I don't know that there's one right behind this one.
It wasn't indicated on, on the map. I can't see a page number on there. The, the house on the screen that you're on, the house. Uh, the, the house on the screen that you're on, the house, uh, that exists there with the boardwalk going down, it appears that there's a platted lot immediately behind that house. But, but this particular parcel doesn't look like there's a platted lot on it. But I'm just, I'm just looking at two different photos here, but. And, and Ms. Thompson, also the yellow highlighted area on the screen there, if that is by scale 21, uh, 25 feet, um, it would indicate, uh, to the magenta line that that would not be an equal distance. So is this a 40-foot right of way or 50-foot right of way?
50.
You're correct.
It's according to the plat, it's 45-foot right of way. If you go back to the other screen, I think it indicates a 45-foot right of way. Ninth Street, 45-foot public right of way. Is that?
If you go up there, we're actually, they're asking us to abandon Dixon Drive.
Well, I say 50 feet, yeah.
Which is 50 feet and I actually think the photograph, uh, Chairman Neal, that yellow box is that whole 50 feet.
Okay, the dash line on one of the other pages that you have there on page four of 14.
Yes, sir. Those are historic lot lines.
Okay. But anyway, uh, Commissioners, we're getting ahead of ourselves. We hadn't had the public hearing yet. I know you've got questions and we typically ask them at this point, but do we have anything else before we would open the public hearing?
Well, I, I've got a question. It looks like the ones right next door have already been abandoned or, or they're using them. Am I right or wrong?
They're definitely already, oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Chairman.
It, it looks like there's a boardwalk, uh, on the rear of that property. I don't, um,
And plantings, and plantings on the one next to it, one where the pool sits.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Any that would speak against abandonment, uh, AB 4815, if you would come forward and state your name? And I do not see anyone moving, uh, anyone to speak in opposition to. Seeing none, hearing none, any that would speak in favor of abandonment, AB 4815, if you would come forward and state your name, please?
Uh, Chairman Neal, the applicants have actually joined us via Teams. I'm not sure if they would like to say anything or just be available for your questions, but both of the applicants are online if y'all have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, assuming that they would be in support of this, uh, if they want to speak now, they, they could. If they don't have anything to say, I don't, I don't see anyone in the room coming forward and no one came up to oppose it. So, um, does the applicant wish to speak?
Sir, this is Tracy Puckett. Um, I'm one of the applicants along with my husband who's actually on the call also. Um, obviously we're in favor of it. Um, we simply want to have more space for our dogs and kids to play, um, and clean the area up just a little bit, but obviously we're in favor and here available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Puckett. Anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Um, Mr. Attorney? I know you're having a hard time speaking there. Um, I just am concerned we're not dealing with alleyways here. This is a road front next to a property that's been a part of lawsuit. Um, I'm not sure how far up and down it runs, uh, but I just wanted to hear your, your thoughts on, on where we're at with this particular situation.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, I, I don't have an overlay to put on there, but the, um, the difference, Commissioner Fendig, is that the, um, the county, the power property received through those, those lawsuits, the county actually owns, um, that property. Uh, that's the 30 acres, um, to the north of Coast Guard. The county does not own the alleys, uh, in the streets in East Beach. Uh, it has an easement over that. So, um, this should not involve any of the property that, uh, we received through that, uh, that lawsuit, uh, dating back decades. Uh, and as Pam, I, I think it's still showing Pam that we're, we're keeping, you know, still part of the, uh, the road, unopened road to the east. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So this, this should not involve anything, anything of the, the 30 acres, Commissioner. Uh, even though it looks like it's very close to that line, it should not involve that at all.
Okay, so no, no concerns on?
No, sir.
Aaron, you're, you're definite that it doesn't belong? You're saying it should not? Are you definite?
I mean, I'm looking at that and I'm looking on my, my map on my other screen here. Um, I mean, I, it, it, you know, it, it shouldn't in the sense that we can't, um, abandon that area. That's just not something we can do, um, at all. So when I say it shouldn't, um, I would have to do an overlay personally to say that it doesn't. So I'll, you know, I think what Pam's telling y'all is it, is it does not include the 30 acres, that she's already done that work. And I'm looking between my two screens here and it, it, you know, it shouldn't and it doesn't, uh, from where I'm sitting. So, um, you know, I'll go ahead and say that it, it, it does include those, does not include those 30 acres from what I'm looking at. Um, I have a, I have a, a plat of East Beach and the, um, a GIS of that that I'm, I'm flipping between. Um, and it definitely does not look like we're giving up any of that 30 acres.
And Mr. Mumford, I can tell you, we did that work with the survey and you're correct.
Thank you, thank you, Pam. And just Commissioners for them, and for what it's worth, the, um, the standards for the county to dispose of property we actually own is much different than the standard for abandoning in a, an unopened, um, road in which we only have an easement. So that, that's another thing that we would just, it's another set of rules and laws that, um, that changed the whole approach, uh, greatly. Um, but this is, this is just the open, old platted, uh, right of way and, and will not touch that 30 acres.
So Aaron, are you saying we cannot abandon this or we can abandon?
Uh, no, sir. I'm saying you can abandon it. You can.
Yeah, because i- if Pam can go back to that map, it looks like we've already done the two parcels next door. So I, I, I don't really understand why we're fighting this one so much, un- unless there's just some legal reason we can't do it.
Uh, no, sir. There's no legal reason. I think Commissioner Fendig, just the county has 30 acres, um, to the east of this right here and, uh, to the north of the Coast Guard. That's very unique. Um, and it's accreted land, it's accreted property that the courts have, uh, issued a ruling, um, many years ago that said the, um, the county owns that property, uh, that accreted property. Um, and it, and it has, um, and the, the public and the, and the residents have a, uh, recreational easement over that property as well. Um, so I think that's, that was the cause of concern. I don't want to speak for Commissioner Fendig, but that's how I received his question, that to want to make sure that we're not implicating that, uh, and disposing potentially, uh, unknowingly of property that, uh, we did acquire through that court case.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Aaron, are there, are there lots to the east of the roadway?
Um, people may pay some taxes on it, but, um, and I, and I'll send the Commissioners a, um, the plat that I'm looking at or the drawing. Um, there are not of the 30 acres, and I'll make sure I'm not conflating, um, different areas here, but of the 30 acres the county owns, there are not lots in that area. Now, you know, oftentimes people pay taxes on things, but there are not, um, platted lots where someone can build a lot on it. Um, uh, I'd have to defer to, to Ms. Thompson on, you know, whether or not there's any specific lot that she's referring to, but generally on the, on the mapping I'm looking at, there's not, there's not platted lots that, um, that people own. In fact, that's the whole reason why the county received the, um, the accreted land in the lawsuit is because, um, it's brand new property. As the, as the ocean accretes, it is property that didn't exist, Highland, that didn't exist, uh, before the accretion. So, um, I would say no, Commissioner, and I don't want to, um, you know, I know Pam, Ms. Thompson said that, um, you know, there are some things that people take, pay taxes on, uh, but of the 30 acres that we have, that that's county property. Um, it does, it does end though. As you go further north, those, um, you know, that the county's property does end and, uh, you know, people do own, uh, the property to the north of that.
Correct. Thank you for that, um, Mr. Mumford. That's correct. I was just saying that is a situation that exists in general along that area, but there are not any privately alleged platted properties in this area.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No, sir. Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you put the motion back up, Pam? I move to approve the abandonment of a portion of the unopened Dixon Drive right of way in the East Beach subdivision, the western 25 foot of the area shown on the attached abandonment application.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker, uh, to abandon AB 4815, uh, by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
No.
Commissioner Rofalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Uh, based on the attorney's counsel, I agree, yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal, yes. That is six, four and one against, uh, item number nine, AB 4815. So it does pass. The next item on our abandonment, um, is a public hearing for AB 4727. Consider the abandonment of a portion of the unopened alley between Wiley and Fraser Street in the King City subdivision, shown the attached abandonment application. And again, uh, Ms. Thompson, that's you.
You're muted, Pam.
You're muted, Pam.
Commissioner, can you see the slide from the beginning of this PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. This is the proposed abandonment of unopened alley right of way in King City. Um, you'll see Fraser spelled two ways, just so you know, the current road name is Fraser with an I in it. The original plating of this had Fraser with no I. So just so you can note that and there not be any confusion. Here's a close-up of that. This is the abandonment plat. And as you can see, there's already some, um, encroachment into that. This is the aerial view of that area. And again, the purple lines are the historic lot lines. The black lines are the tax lot lines. Here's the view of that alley area. County Engineer Paul Andrews did send this out for comment. We did not receive any concerns or issues from any of our utility partners and we did not receive any comments from the public. And I do understand that one of the applicants is online, um, electronically also if you have any questions for them, um, that.
Can you go back two frames? So this is the alley that, from the hedge to the house?
This is from the backyard of the applicant. He's already using the part he's asking for. But, and, and if it was done prior, I believe to this applicant obtaining it, it's just to get everything square.
Is, is the house next door in this same area or has that been a variance or abandoned?
Uh, Commissioner Rofalski, I haven't checked that. I'm going to assume, I'm going to go back one more slide to show you. As you can see in this area, um, things have had previously been built over these historic lot lines.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
No, sir.
All right, this being, did I hear someone? This being a public hearing, uh, any that would speak in opposition to AB 4727, please come forward and state your name for the record, please? Any that would speak in opposition to AB 4727? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, we'll close out the opposition. Any that would like to speak in support of AB 4727, please come forward and state your name.
Yeah, good evening. This is Mark Van Aker. And I'm here with, uh, with my wife. We're the owners of the property. Um, we're not, uh, permanent residents yet, but we're, we're looking to, uh, improve the backyard. Uh, and to be honest, we were not even aware that there was an alley. Uh, and in the process of trying to get a permit, uh, to, uh, make the improvement and for a pool, uh, we found out there was an alley. So obviously we are in favor of the abandonment.
All right, thank you, sir. Any others to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Does, does this add the property of that alley to the tax roll?
No, sir. Um, it would, I guess, increase the valuation of that portion of the property, but we are just removing an easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move to approve the abandonment of a portion of the unopened alley between Wiley and Fraser Street in the King City subdivision shown on the attached abandonment application.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion. Sorry. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, yes. That is unanimous. Our next public hearing is for land use. This is, uh, item number 11 on the agenda, ZM 4836. And it's 772 and 820 Canal Road Rezone. Request to rezon 772 and 820 Canal Road, parcel 03 dash 03353 and 03 dash 03354 from the Forest Agricultural FA Zoning District to the General Residential ZGR Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to construct a multifamily residential development. Jake Hightower of Robert Civil Engineering, uh, is agent for, uh, Robert Newham and John Newham, Adella Dozer Newham Trust as the owners. And, um, Pam, are you going to do that one as well?
Yes.
You have all kinds of names on this report tonight.
Yes, sir. I apologize for that. Um, yes. Do you see the first summary screen of the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Again, Commissioners, for the record, this is Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is a rezoning request along Canal Road from Forest Agricultural, um, to General Residential. The proposed land use is for a multifamily residential development. It's 27.65 acres. The developer's planning to build a 178-unit multifamily rental community. The individual units will be in the visual style of detached, single-family garden homes. So this is a style of multifamily you may not have seen before. style of multifamily you may not have seen before. This is a portion of the property. You see this, I mean, this is the aerial with the zoning. As you know, just south of it are the Canal Street, many storages. Just north of it is many doggies and the Harry Driggers-Glenco Parkway intersection. This is the plan for the development. As you can see, they've taken care of detention, flow, and traffic. This has been reviewed by our development review team. This is an example of what this will look like. These units will range in size from seven hundred seventy-one square feet up to thirteen hundred square feet. At its regular meeting on November second, the Mainland Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that you all approve Z M four eight three six as presented. Here are your, are your possible motions. In the box at the bottom is the staff and Mainland Planning Commission recommended motion. This is a public hearing. I'm available if you have a question. And the agent for this applicant, Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering, is online virtually if you have any questions for him.
Pam, can you go back to the platter minute, please?
Is that what you mean, Commissioner Rofoski, the site plan?
Yes, ma'am. What, what's the density there?
I'm going to see if Jake can help me with that while I look it up on the staff report, Commissioner.
Jake Hightower here with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm the agent for the development. The density is at six point four four units per acre right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
The, Pam, can you go to the slide that shows the, the house? I think it's two, two frames? That one. So I guess for the engineer, is this one of the smaller ones, or is this the medium one or the large one?
Yes, sir. This is an example of what the smaller one would look like.
Okay, and that's about seven hundred and seventy feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, is the applicant looking to do this sort of as an Airbnb?
Um, sir, the applicant is on the line. I might let them answer that question.
This is Christopher Wade. I'm an agent of the Newhams for the property. They will not be Airbnb-type rentals. This will be just like a, you'll have an annual rental contract, just like the adjacent multifamily apartment buildings on and around Canal Road.
Okay. So, so this is affordable housing, basically, but it's not for, not being sold, it's all rental?
I want to clarify, this is not affordable housing.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, this is Pamela Thompson again. So this is just a new style or one additional style of an apartment complex. As you all know, I most recently lived in Athens, Georgia, and you would have areas that you went into that looked like smaller and medium, actually, single-family residential development, and it was actually multifamily rental run just like an apartment complex. So you're going to have some amenities, you're going to have the parking, you're going to probably have a model unit, and this will be just, it's a different option for an apartment.
So, so it's basically all just rental? Okay, I got, I got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions before we go to the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Any that would speak in opposition to Z M four eight three six, please come forward and state your name. And Ms. Thompson, did we have anyone send in written comments or objection?
No, sir. We did not. At the Mainland Planning Commission, Mr. J R Smith made some comments of his opinion of the staff report, and that's all we had.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. And again, anyone that would come forward and speak in opposition to Z M four eight three six, please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, we will close out the opposition. Any that would speak in favor of Z M four eight three six, please come forward and state your name. Any that would speak in favor? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close out the public hearing, and Commissioners, we are back to you.
Mr. Chairman, just one, one question for Pam. Of course, this map doesn't reflect it, but all of the Canal Road widening and curb cuts and everything that we're, we're are, have been working on and planning on, does that, the egress and ingress of those properties?
Yes, sir. We took all that into consideration with this plan.
Were we aware of this plan when we were making those? I didn't recall.
No, sir, we were not, but when they came in, they were aware of our road widening plan, so they had planned accordingly.
Okay. I was fine. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Z M forty-eight thirty-six as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rofoski, and all in favor by roll.
Mr. Chairman, that was David O'Quinn.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner O'Quinn. So all in favor by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofoski?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, yes. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Item eleven, Z M four eight three six is approved. That concludes our public hearings. Our next item, number twelve, is under appointments. Consider appointing one citizen to fill the unexpired term of Carl Alexander to serve on the Glen County Police Advisory Panel. The term ends April thirty, twenty twenty-two. That applicant is a single applicant, Valerie Atkins.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner David O'Quinn bringing forward Ms. Valerie Atkins to replace the position on the police advisory panel that Carl Alexander once filled. Ms. Atkins has experience as a police officer, as well as a, being at the federal law enforcement training center for almost thirty years, with extensive work in local and state law enforcement, training, training programs. She's been in the community since eighty-seven, so she has a really long history here in the community, understands the police department, some of the challenges that we've had over the years. I think she will be a great addition to the police advisory panel as we continue to move forward towards the May twenty-two sunset of it. So there's a lot of work to be done, and I think she's ready to be a part of it and do, do, do her share in helping bring the police department forward.
Mr. Chairman, I have also spoke with Ms. Atkins, and, and I agree one hundred percent with Commissioner O'Quinn.
Okay.
I as well. I think we're just very blessed to have someone that's willing to step up and do this. Also, a senior master sergeant or something in the army, in the army. She is, has an interesting background, and I think she's going to be a real, real plus. But I think we're blessed as well to do it.
Okay. Commissioner O'Quinn, do you want to make this in form of a motion then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we appoint Ms. Valerie Atkins to the police advisory panel to serve out the term previously held by Carl Alexander.
Second.
All right, so I think I heard Commissioner O'Quinn made the motion, Commissioner Rofoski seconded by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofoski?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tostetson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, yes. So it is unanimous. All right, we'll go back and pick up item seven for discussion. And it is, item number seven is approved, reclassifying the communications manager position to a public relations manager position at an estimated additional annualized cost of thirteen thousand seven hundred and three dollars, with funding provided by current vacancies in the general fund FY twenty-two budget, and add the position of project manager to the classification and compensation plan and to the list of budgeted full-time positions at an estimated annualized cost of ninety-seven thousand and twenty-one dollars, including benefits, with fundings provided by current vacancies in the general fund FY twenty-two budget effective immediately. Mr. Mumford?
Do you want to speak to that? I will, Commissioners. Good evening again. So as the item reads, this is two things. One is a reclassification of the communications manager position to a public relations, sorry, P R position. That does require board approval because it's a reclassification of an existing position in your, in your plan. So that is before you. It would include a, a job description that, I'm not sure if that's in your backup or not, that moves this person to more of a communications position as opposed to what Matthew Kent was doing, which was a lot of A B work, also crossed over into a P I O work, et cetera. So that, if there's any questions about that, I know that there have been questions that have come up today as far as why reclassify it, what's the, what's the reason for it, and what the odds behind it.
Well, I'll just wade into this, if I may. You know, I, I saw this on the agenda, and we're creating literally two new positions, and we've got so many vacant chairs. I'm sitting in one of them right now in Catherine Down's old office, that, that haven't been filled, and yet we're talking about two new positions. I, I understand this public relations manager thing, I, I really do, but I, I just think it would be ill-advised to, to hire a public relations manager at this time. I, I certainly think we need a public information officer, but, you know, we're elected officials, and, and we are the public relations department for, for the county government. I, I don't, I, I mean, public relations manager has the connotation of an advocate for something. And I, I really don't, I, I probably need it, but I, I don't want anybody advocating for me. I, I can speak for myself, and, and all the, and the other six of you can as well. We certainly have access to the radio and the newspaper and, and, and whatever, and, and I, I just don't believe that hiring a P R person is, sends the right message to the community that, that they need to be paying for somebody to speak for us and to, you, you know, put lipstick on whatever. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't think the connotation rings well right now. I do think we need to get a public information officer. He needs to be involved in public information and not putting together teleconferences and all the stuff that, that Matthew Kent wound up doing. But certainly, someone out there that can articulate the position of the county and the information that, from this board, without having to, I guess, spin it, for lack of a better word. So those are just my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, I have concerns about, I'm not really clear about this, to be honest with you. I know when I, I started, we had Candace as our public information officer, you remember? And the way that she operated that position is, I thought she did a, a great job, and evidently others did. That's why she's somewhere else now. And, but, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what this, what we would gain from, you know, doing something different. I, I never did get clear about Matthew Kent, because I saw him as an I T person. I didn't see him as a public information officer, because the standard for me was how Candace operated and interacted with the Commissioners. And then Catherine came on, and she was, and she advised as a communications person. I thought, well, I'm, so I'm, I'm just, I'm not clear about this, how this would improve what we need done.
So perhaps, Commissioners, I'll, I'll step back in time a little bit, and I, Commissioner Booker, those are some good questions. And Candace Temple was our first public information officer, and that's what we, we added. So before that, we did not have a P I O. And then around two thousand, I might get this off by a year or two, but around two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the county added the P I O position, which was intended to be, you know, our public communications individual manager. And she did an excellent job for that, and she dealt with the press, with the media, you know, whether it was press releases or just communications generally. She did that, and she, I think she started a newsletter. And over time, when she left, the Catherine came on, and she did that for a little bit. But that, at some point in time, probably around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, maybe-ish, that, that job started to take on open records and handling open records and responses and those kind of things with the media and the public. And then the public communications manager or the communications manager position was created. So it, it, and that's what Matthew filled, and then Matthew kind of oversaw the P I O. And the P I O position became less communications and more open records and some communication. So the idea in this is trying to kind of re-center, whether you want to call it public relations or P I O, but try to re-center some of that so that a single person is doing more of the public, I guess, the media calls and responses and press releases, and let, you know, the other person do open records. So we're, we're trying to figure out how to position both those positions. And there may be a, a point where we ask y'all to look at the P I O position and maybe create open records, a dedicated open records person, because that is becoming more and more of a, a full-time job as we go forward. So I think staff is trying to figure out how to best have those positions serve the board Commissioners. Again, over the last twelve years, it has evolved into two positions that we used to have none, turn one, turn two, and trying to figure out how to best utilize those positions to communicate with the, the press, with the public, you know, really show a lot of things that the county's doing positively, you know, out, in the public. So I think between Tamara and I, I think we're open for suggestions as to what you'd like to see, how you'd like to see that formed, what you'd like to see the P I O be, or this other position. I think it's a good opportunity, a good time to, to do that. So I think that's more than anything else from, from our perspective, to put it out there for y'all, and then y'all can tell us what you'd like to see those positions be. But, you know, I think Matthew was more technical in, in, in nature and was really good at it. Handled a lot of the board meetings, did a lot of the A B work, set things up for the, for the board. So we're trying to figure out if that position would be better as more of a, you know, someone that, that did interact with the press more. So that, that's a little bit more than I, I intended to say on that, but, you know, this position is relatively young in terms of how long we've had it, so. in terms of how long we've had it. So, you know, I think we're just trying to figure out what, what niche it should go in.
And one of the things, I, I don't have a problem if we call it a communication officer or, or, you know, it, it doesn't have to have that name, but I have talked to our consultant about this. He sent down a recommendation on how to structure the, the job description and, and that's in our packet tonight. Whether or not we, we call it communications or public relations or, or public information. I, I think we need this person. And, and, and I think, you know, at this point, we're not adding two positions. We're just adding one, modifying one. And, you know, I think we're trying to draw a distinction with no differences here. I, I, I think this, this is something that, that the time has come for. And, and, you know, if we want to, if we wanted to defer this and talk, talk about it in a work session and explore it and expand it, I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all. So.
Mr. Chairman, that's probably would be my, my thinking. And, and, you know, when you start looking at the whole aspect of communications throughout the county, when you're looking at communications manager or this new hybrid, the PIO, how are we handling open records? I think they're all kind of intertwined. And I certainly think it, it's something that needs to be thought through and, 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 and we do need a communications manager who is able to, to do as Mr. Mumford was saying and, and be able to engage a little bit more into the, with the media and with the public in regards to the message and what's happening with the commission. But I think there's three or four things that kind of link together. And it might be wise to have Scott Johnson look at all four of those with Michael Stewart and, and just say, okay, let's link all these together. How would they, how would they work? How do we get it, get the right job description for each person? I know we're talking, we're talking about, do we need a separate open records person? So I think there's several moving pieces there that, that maybe we ought to put on a work session here in, in December and, and have a little bit more of a report and a discussion about it.
Well, I think one of the, you know, one of the problems probably is, you know, when we don't have an assistant county manager. We don't have a county manager that's on site. And, you know, Catherine Downs picked up the ball on a lot of stuff. At, at one point, open records and, and, and communication with the, with the press and, and writing, press releases and, and all those kinds of things. And, you know, I think that's, that's important, but I, Mr. Chairman, I just got a real problem with PR. I'm sorry. I, I just got a problem with them. This is our, this is our PR person here, you know. So I, I think if, and I, I've looked at all these things here. It, it's a lot of stuff. I mean, I, you know, we got ribbon cuttings and all that. I, I, that's normally the Chamber of Commerce that does all that kind of stuff. But anyway, those are just my thoughts.
Well, I know we talked about, you know, one of the reasons we have Scott Johnson and, and his group and is to keep looking at and moving forward and, and having just a refinement of some of the operations within the county and not just sitting idly by. So I, I would encourage us to maybe let him and Mike Stewart kind of look at all these different positions, look at the whole communication and how we communicate with the, with the public. And then from there, maybe address not only this position, but a couple underneath it. That, that would be my suggestion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I think that everybody's saying the right thing. These are things that we're talking about. But we're definitely jumping the gun. We, first of all, like we've all said, these are needs that are variant with the staff members' capacity and capabilities. And we got the consultant in, we have a new manager, interim manager coming in. We have the open position of the assistant manager. And, you know, ultimately, I, I agree with, and we all do, I know, but I want to say again that Commissioner Brunson said the right thing is the public expects us to be the PR individually to speak forth. And we have operated, y'all have operated previous to the new guys, me included, coming in. And, you know, those, those jobs or actions or activities have changed according to the ability of that individual. Open records is a big thing. Publicity, information, public information about what's going on in the county, what, what's happening. Those are all variants. But I, I just think that for the public relations person, we need to just continue to defer until our new interim manager comes in, Scots gets together and we kind of start really looking at what we want that job description to be. And then I just dropped down to the property manager, project manager for managing SLOSS. And, and, you know, we are working to bring forth to our community a, a discussion in town hall meetings about the next SLOSS. And the project managers not having that, that's something that's been echoed from the public and from staff and from us as a leadership group. But the individual may not be a position. It may be contractual parts of it. Every time we do a SLOSS, it was the same for us when I served in the past. You, you have roadway projects and, and ditching projects and other projects that involve long amount of negotiations to acquire land to, to implement those projects in, road right-of-ways. Canal Road's a good example. A lot of the improvements over there in Brunswick. And it takes time. It takes a dedicated individual that knows that's their specialty, like a legal person, a negotiator. On the other hand, we know that staff is overwhelmed and short capacity and, and we need an actual, you know, coordinator or a project manager for some of these particular projects. That's not the same as the individual that we have as legal. So I, we're talking the right direction. I want the community to hear us that we're responding because this is what they've been telling us. But I think we get our team in place with our, our new interim manager. We, we, we come out with a, a discussion of based on our new team getting together on what SLOSS plans might be. And, and then go out and do our town halls and get the feedback and then maybe get these positions filled in the first of January or somewhere in there where we have specific job descriptions. And we know that the talent, because what Catherine did and what Matthew, they all were talented people, but they had different talents and different resources. And we just need to get the right people. And it takes time. I know the public's frustrated. We hadn't filled positions. Well, that's the economy we're in, but it's not only just that. We're looking for the right people. That was our, our, our job assignment from the voters when we came in. So I agree. Let's, let's defer it. Let's have Scott and the new manager weigh in. Have a workshop, you know, not early December, but maybe later December where they have a chance to get a plan and bring it and then look for, you know, what kind of hires we need in January. Thanks.
Well, I'll just say, I'll just say this, and I've talked too much already, but regarding the project manager, I think it is critical that we bring a project manager position on board. I, I just am afraid that we're maybe getting the cart before the horse. And I think, I, I mean, I, I see SLOSS, 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 SLOSS. I mean, we, we, we haven't SLOSS can't go on the ballot until sometimes next year, and I don't remember when that is. But I, I, I really I, I think we just need to sit down and grind this thing out. This, this job classification description here is not a one-man rodeo. It, it, whoever assumes this position is going to have to have some help. He's going to have to have a staff. And I, I think that we need to proactively be looking at that whole scenario of, of how we're going to make all this happen. My goodness, we have the potential, blessed that of a lot of federal money coming our way in the coming months. I mean, they seem to be printing it by the boatload up there in, in Washington or somewhere. And some of it's going to be coming down our way. And if we're blessed enough to, to have a SLOSS, you know, we could have millions and millions and millions of dollars that, that we need to, that we need to invest in the right manner. And, and this person is critical to that. But I, I think we need to be realistic as we approach it and, and methodical and, and, and level with everybody that this is not going to be a one-man position, that, that, that there are a lot of variables. And I, the only thing I'm saying is, this was on consent agenda tonight. The chairman has already addressed it. I, I think we bring it back and discuss it at a work session. And, and I, I'm, I'm happy to go out and support this project manager position. I, I think it's critical going forward that, that we have somebody in place besides our public works department who have full-time jobs every day, trying to, trying to manage all this stuff. So we need boots on the ground and I, I get that. So anyway, I ain't gonna say nothing else.
Could someone tell me the difference between public relations and a PIO officer? I see them both as the same and maybe I'm just, just backward.
It doesn't have this, to me, it doesn't have the same connotation. People hire public relations people because they've got they, they got problems and they want, they want some kind of a spin on it. It is, is what my connotation of a public relations person is. Public information puts the information out there in a press release and, and, and doesn't spin it. So maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but PR person just.
I really think it's just how, how you interpret it, Bill, but I, I'm good, I'm good with, I'm, let's just leave it PIO.
That, that, that'd be my recommendation is just to leave it.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we table this tonight? Why don't we bring it to a work session in December? We'll bring it to the work session in December. It's two separate items. And, and we'll discuss it with our new interim manager and our consultant being present.
I'm good with that.
I make, I make the motion we table this until our December work session meeting. Item seven, I'm sorry, until our December seventh meeting.
I second that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rafoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to table item number seven, these two positions under discussion until our December work session. All in favor by roll call. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Counsel, is table the right word or defer? It should be defer. Or is it, okay, is either one, okay?
Can't hear you, sir.
You're muted, Aaron.
Sorry. Either one is, either one is fine, Commissioners. The correct would be to defer it, but table is the same thing.
I can change that. I can change that if necessary.
I just remembered seeing something about table. It never came up again or something.
Table indefinitely. I think that, I mean, I think either one works. In fact, I actually, I think the table might be the, the Robert's Rules version. So either one gets the, the, the job done.
Okay.
All right. So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Rafoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to table defer this until our December work session. By roll call, Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rafoski.
Yes.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tosterson. Commissioner Fendig.
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, yes. Commissioner Tosterson, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's to defer. All right. Item number thirteen. Under general businesses, consider author, authorizing an additional funds in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars in excess SLOSS twenty sixteen funds to be designated to the SLOSS twenty sixteen Harry Driggers Trail South project. And direct those funds to be paid to Swindell Construction for contracts awarded to them on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one. With thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cent coming from project one zero five eight eight and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cent coming from project number nine zero six two. And Ms. Thompson, you have the privilege of staying to the bitter end tonight, so.
It's not bitter end, Chairman. It's the better end. I enjoy spending evenings with all of you gentlemen working to improve the county. This is Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. I'm sincere, Commissioner Rafoski, now. Come on.
That's some more butter.
You all have a full memo on this in your packet. To summarize this, this is the trail section. We call it Harry Driggers. It's along Glencoe Parkway heading up toward Harry Driggers. We receive DOT grant money to participate in building this. We awarded it earlier this year to Swindell. And you all know, many of you more than me, how, how crazy the construction field has gotten. And so in the time it took us to get the necessary elements in place for DOT to receive that grant funding, just because so many people and suppliers and contractors and construction managers are stretched so thin. Swindell actually could not hold their price. They held it for over six months, which is way above the call of duty. So we talked with them, we talked with DOT. And DOT actually increased the amount of the funding that they gave us from the grant just because of increased construction costs. So Swindell has told us that for for them to complete the project now, it's the sixty-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen you have in front of you now. What that will do is completely match those funds, get both phases of what we're calling the Glencoe Trail Project done. That will be from excess SLOSS funds on the county side. If we were to not do this and just bid from scratch again, we would probably get an even higher cost because of just the construction realities today. So staff request to you is that you authorize this agenda item, giving those additional funds to Swindell. We use the DOT grant funds, the already budgeted and approved SLOSS funds. We will give them a notice to proceed next week or the week after, and then we'll start construction on this trail project in January. So this is one of your SLOSS twenty sixteen projects. This is one that take, it took just a long while to get to fruition, but with your approval of this tonight, we can start turning dirt and put the sign up in January of twenty twenty-two. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners?
None, ma'am. Absolutely none.
All right. Can I entertain a motion?
Do we, do we have a motion?
I got it.
Can you get that to the screen, Pam?
Yeah, I got it. I got it here. I moved to authorize additional funds in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars in excess. SLOSS twenty sixteen funds be designated to this project and direct those funds be paid to Swindell Construction Company for contracts awarded to them on May the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. PI number zero zero one zero five eight eight, thirty-seven four thirty-four fifty and project PI number zero 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 nine zero six two for twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cent.
Second.
That was Commissioner Quinn on the second.
No, that was Rafoski.
Good Lord, y'all sounding too much alike tonight. But we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rafoski. All in favor by roll call, Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fendig?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yep.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rafoski?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal, yes. So that is unanimous. I believe that completes our. I believe that completes our agenda for tonight, and I understand from Mr. Mumford, we have no items for executive session tonight, so.
Chairman, I'll defer to Commissioner Mumford, but I thought we had an agenda item for executive session.
There's no link. There is no link.
Pam, you're overruled.
If the commission wishes to have executive session, I can send out a link for you.
It was for property acquisition, Aaron and Tamara, I sent you an email earlier this week.
Okay, okay, I thought you meant in your email today that you want to do it in December. Okay, but we can.
No, Aaron, it wasn't that one, it was the one I sent you Tuesday, and you told me to do it today instead of Tuesday.
We can do it if you, yeah, if you need to do it tonight, we can do it.
If at all possible, I really commit to y'all, it'll be less than 15 minutes.
All right, then Ms. Thompson's disappointing us all, we all wanted to, but I need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go to executive session for property acquisition.
Second.
And Mr. Mumford, while we're in executive session, do we need to talk about personnel or we'll just wait on that?
Personnel as well, let's add that to it.
So I need to amend the motion to go ahead and talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in my motion that we move to executive session for discussion for property acquisition and personnel.
Second.
That's a second now by Commissioner Tosterson. Commissioner Brunson was showing his disdain wanting to be through here, but by roll call to go into.
We're talking about the community's boundary director.
By roll call, Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Booker.
Probably.
Commissioner Brunson, did I hear a yes?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Tosterson.
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Fendig.
Two dogs, yes, that's why I have my coffee.
And Commissioner Neal, yes, so we are adjourning to executive session and.
Ms. Tamara, is she sending that to our calendar or to our email?
I just sent it to your email, so if you go into your email, you should be able to click to join the meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Tamara.
I beat you.
Only, only by, only by a second.
Dang. Inch is as good as a mile.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Uh, let's see, we got one, two, three, four, five. All of us enough to, uh, need a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we come out of executive session?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner O'Quinn was the second on that one. Uh, by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunson? Still struggling.
He won't make it back.
There he is. Motion to come out of executive session, Commissioner Brunson? You're on mute. Still on mute?
I know what, I'm trying to find the cursor, okay, yeah, uh, yeah.
All right, uh, Commissioner Fendig? Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Neal, yes, that's, uh, that's unanimous. Uh, no other business to come before us tonight. Mr. Attorney?
No, sir, thank you commissioners.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to adjourn by roll call, Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Rofolsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes, thank God.
Commissioner Brunson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tosterson?
Yes.
Mr. Fendig? Not or something?
Give him a thumbs up.
Sorry, my bulldog coffee went out, yes.